Good evening and welcome to the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have six this evening with one on his way. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident, and members are appointed by the City Council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the City Council. For most items, the Commission makes recommendations, and the City Council has the final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to appeal to the City Council. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to present, then a chance for any member of the public to provide testimony. And then the Commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before any action is taken. Our first item this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Item one this evening does have a public hearing component of it. However, I believe that a continuance has been requested, so I will turn it over to Planner Crowell for additional information.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So, yes, we have a proposal for eighty-five twenty-five and eighty-five forty-five Penn Ave South. And in this item, the applicant is proposing or requesting preliminary and final plat approval to subdivide two existing residential lots into fifteen townhome lots and one common lot. This was originally approved in planning case two thousand and twenty-one thirty-three. And so since kind of those approvals, the applicant has since shifted the or changed these floor plans of those townhome units slightly. And so it requires then the lot lines to adjust so that those units fit appropriately on the townhome lots. And that's where they need the this new plat. There was some miscommunication unfortunately with among planning staff. And so the newspaper notice did go out in the sun current on September fifth. But then we were also required by state statute to mail public notices to all neighboring properties within five hundred feet. And those unfortunately did not go out in time for for the item. State statute requires that they go at least ten days before the public hearing to that. So because those weren't properly noticed, that's where we're kind of have the recommendation and the motion language here to open the public hearing tonight, but then continue that to the next Planning Commission meeting, which would be October third. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Planner Crowell? Alright, seeing none, I will open the public hearing officially, and we will hold open that public hearing, looking for a motion to hold open the public hearing until the date certain. Commissioner Cookton.
Ma'am Chair, do we need to check if there's anyone in the chambers who does wish to speak on this item this evening?
Sure, absolutely. Great idea. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? Planning Manager Mark Agard, is there anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, one individual online is the applicant. Not sure if he deserves to speak or not, but we can find out.
Alright, Mr. Furlong, we're going to make you a panelist, and feel free to unmute yourself and add any additional information if you wish.
This is Steve Furlong. Commissioners, I have nothing to add on the application.
Thank you. Any other folks in the chambers who would like to testify on this item? Alright, seeing none, motion to continue. Commissioner Cookton.
Ma'am Chair, in case PL two zero two four dash one three five, I move to hold open the public hearing and continue the public hearing to the October third, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting at six P M. in the City Council chambers at Bloomington Civic Plaza.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the October third, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item two is also a public hearing. We are looking at a conditional use permit for the expansion of a minor vehicle repair facility and a major revision to final development plans for an addition into existing vehicle repair building. And Planner Crowell, you also have the staff report. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Planning Commission. So again, this item now is related to eighty-four thirty-one Lyndale Ave South. It's currently zoned B two and in a planned development overlay. The site itself is a little over an acre, and then the building area with the proposed addition would be slightly over nine thousand square feet. And so this is the currently a Discount Tire building at the site. And as mentioned, they're requesting a conditional use permit as well as a major revision to final development plans for an addition onto their existing minor vehicle repair building. Here's just an aerial view to give some context to the existing building, and then the building addition is outlined in orange. I had a note in the staff report, so when this building in use was originally approved in two thousand and three, retail tire sales and installation was a permitted use in the B two zoning district, you know, and then since two thousand and three, the city code has gone through a variety of changes and updates. And we would now consider this use a minor vehicle repair use, which is currently a conditional use in the B two zoning district. And so this is considered a legal non-conforming use. And with that, our code has to kind of specifically state if a if an expansion is allowed on this use. And because it's a conditional use, getting approval of a conditional use permit allows for that expansion of the the non-conforming use. So that's where we have the the two applications tonight, one for the conditional use permit and then other for the major revision to final development plan. Here's the site plan provided by the applicant. Again, the addition is shown kind of outlined in orange and in blue. It's an eight hundred and sixty square foot addition that would include additional tire storage space as well as an interior trash room that would have internal access from the building. Looking at, you know, the various code requirements that we're looking at, it continues to meet the minimum site area. The building addition does meet all of the required structure setbacks. This building doesn't exceed its maximum impervious surface coverage or its maximum floor area ratio with the addition. This addition would remove four existing parking stalls on the site, and so it'd bring the overall site to forty stalls. And based on our current minimum code requirements, they would need thirty-eight stalls, so they continue to remain in compliance as well with the minimum off-street parking standards. Here's a floor plan provided by the applicant. Again, just to show, the addition would include an expanded tire storage area as well as that interior trash room, again, that would have internal access to the building as well. Looking at the elevations, the proposed exterior material would be a stucco finish over masonry and would be white and gray to match the existing building. They recently redid the exterior materials on this building, I believe, back in two thousand and twenty-three, so it'd match that. It'd include one new access door and one new overhead door on the north elevation, and then on the east elevation, there's also an additional overhead door being proposed. Looking at the lighting and landscaping plan, they'd be required to continue to comply with the the plans that were approved with the original site plan. With the the addition, they remain in compliance with the lighting plan. Then the landscaping plan, based on the area of disturbance, would require just one additional tree and one additional shrub on top of what was part of that original plan. And so in the in the landscaping provided by the applicant, they are replacing any existing landscaping on site that is that is dying, as well as replacing the landscaping that has to be removed for the building addition. There's just one note in there. It looks like maybe some of on the original plan, there were more shrubs along Lyndale Ave, and it looks like that may have been replaced with some tall grass and perennials that wouldn't be in compliance with the original landscape plan. So we just have a condition on there to work with the applicant to just ensure that the landscaping meets all of the minimum requirements. So with that, I can answer any questions you have. We also have a representative from the application here as well. And again, there's kind of two motions, so the conditional use permit is a decision that you all as the Planning Commission would make tonight, and then related to the major revision to final development plans, it's a recommendation that would then go to the City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, ma'am Chair. Mr. Crowell, how does this application relate to the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Planning Commissioner Cookton. So with the Lyndale retrofit plan, there were a variety of rezonings that were done in the area, I believe on eighty-sixth and Lyndale, where those were rezoned to B four. And this property as well, some of the surrounding commercial properties were not rezoned with that, and there isn't currently a proposal to rezone those to B four. So as long as it's kind of complying with the B two zoning district standards, as well as all of the conditions with the conditional use permit, staff felt that it was in compliance with the the retrofit plan. I think we also noted that a lot of the building expansion isn't necessarily increasing the capacity of minor vehicle repair use. They're not adding service bays with this addition. It's really just some additional storage space in the trash room.
Any other additional questions? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, ma'am Chair. Mr. Crowell, could you go back to the landscaping plan, please?
Yeah.
Is there a requirement for parking island trees?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Planning Commissioner Cookton. Yeah, we currently in our code do require one tree in each parking lot island. Think looking at the original landscape plan that was approved, they did not show trees in the islands, and it was approved that way. And so I think we, because they're not touching that part of the the parking lot, didn't kind of flag that to to do and could, because it was originally approved without them, could continue to not have them.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner McGovern.
Thank you, Chair. Going back to a couple of slides where it showed an aerial view, there's currently looks like something is on the property right there in the orange. What is that?
Oh, sure. Chair Albrecht, Commissioner McGovern, yeah, this was just an aerial view. It looks like it might just be like a truck of some sort kind of parked there. So currently on the site, there's four existing parking stalls there, and so those would be proposed to be removed with the the building addition.
Thank you.
I do have one question, Planner Crowell. How is trash being handled currently, and is that in compliance with our code today?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, I believe that they have trash inside of the building, but there also may be some dumpsters kind of outside of the building, but it might be good for the applicant could confirm some of that, too.
Yes, I'd be happy to ask that.
Yeah.
Last call for questions for staff. Alright, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
I can, yeah.
Come on up.
So just to...
Introduce yourself.
Okay, sorry, I've never done this. My name's Aaron Monzel. I'm with Discount Tire today. To answer the question that you just asked, currently we do have an enclosed with a roll-up door that our dumpsters do go into. Occasionally, sometimes those do get put outside because of the overflow of dead tires, and that's part of the reason we're trying to get the expansion is for when we have so many tires coming off in the wintertime to keep our customers safe, we have dead tires or old tires that continue to pile up. And so that's also part of the reason that that truck is currently in that aerial view, because we can't put a a container in there. So sometimes we occasionally will put a a truck or a movable vehicle there and actually just put our dead tires in there. The service that comes and picks them up sometimes comes two to three times a week, and sometimes it's still not enough. So sometimes in the view of the city and our business, we think sometimes it might be better look to have the dumpsters temporarily sit outside instead of those dead tires overflowing out into the side of the building. So that's part of the reason we're looking to get the expansion is to overall have the the city look better, better take care of our customers, our employees, and as our brand image look better, so we don't have stuff outside that's not in compliance with the city.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I I have one question, Mr. Monzel. Will you just describe the improvements that were made to the building in two thousand and twenty-three based on your knowledge?
Yeah. So we originally, you know, we hired a company out of Texas, and they did a lot of our locations around the state. And we was just kind of a brand refresh. It was to bring our our image up to, you know, the new standard for corporate nationwide with our new logo. It used to have big block letters that said Discount Tire Co. Since the building was made, we came up with a new logo, so we wanted to put some new signage on the building. And what had happened is the company we had hired reached out to the city, all of the cities, but they didn't get a specific answer of what needed a permit or what could or couldn't be painted. And so most of our brand refreshes that we did that required external painting, natural brick or stone, we weren't painting. But in this case, because we planned in the future to try to get a building expansion, we knew we weren't going to be able to match that exterior block or brick perfectly. So we went ahead and started painting all of it. We did get a stop work order from the city of Bloomington because they came and said, hey, hey, you're not supposed to, you know, paint brick or natural stone. So then we resubmitted permits, and we actually ended up stuck going the whole building, so it would be in compliance with that, and then painted the whole building. So now in this, if this does get approved, our building expansion will be easily matchable to stucco and, you know, put ephesus on it and paint it accordingly to match the rest of the structure.
Great, thank you. Alright, I think that's all the questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So if anyone in the chambers this evening would like to come up, what we must come on up. If you haven't already done so, please sign in with your address, and then we have a clock up here that we will use for three minutes. And if you want to take more time than that, we will address that at the three-minute mark.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I already filled this out. I am here just to let just to let everybody know that we are here. Across the street on eighty-four, across north of eighty-fourth, is the Applewood Point Senior Condominiums Cooperative, and there's ninety-five households in there. And we have, we I from my balcony, I can look directly into the Discount Tire service bays. And there are other, there's a Holiday Gas Station there and several other retail outlets. And I was just here after receiving the notice that you guys sent out, letting us know that this was happening, to find out what was going on. And we were sort of fearful that they were going to turn into an auto, they were going to expand into an auto body workshop or something like that, but it doesn't sound like that's the case. I may be able to talk to this gentleman afterwards and find out exactly what's going on. But it's noisy enough over there already, our bottom line is, and we are hoping that any expansion isn't going to add to the hubbub and the traffic and the noise that comes from that area that can be very disturbing to to the older people who live in that condominium. And it it's an impact, it impacts our quality of life, it impacts the resale value of our units, and I mean even health concerns of people who need to get their rest and their sleep during the day. So we were just concerned that this was going to be some major expansion that was going to create a lot more noise and activity right across the street from where we are, about a couple hundred yards away, I would estimate, from the front door of Discount Tire. And when they did that refresh, if you back, was it last year already? For several weeks, they were working on that, and there was a lot of noise involved with that, just the beep 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 of the of the various machinery when they back up is enough to drive an old person crazy. But anyway, we're just making sure that you guys know we were there and that sounds like doing a good job of of making sure that they meet the zoning requirements, and hopefully it's not going to create a whole bunch of noise for us. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to testify on this item? Planning Manager Mark Agard, is there anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, no one online for this item.
Alright, we'll give it a second. Last call. Alright, looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion? Yes, Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I grocery shop at the Cub Foods right by there regularly, and I'm excited that a Bloomington business is looking to come more into compliance with their needs and with our requirements around trash and dead tires in this case. And I'm happy to see the investment in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner McGovern.
I have to mirror that. There was a time my daughter needed tires and Discount Tire was in the neighborhood, and you guys did a fantastic job getting her back on the road. Appreciate you guys.
Any other thoughts? I will add just my two cents here. Appreciate that that the trash is being handled appropriately and that we are moving this business into more of compliance. So thank you for your work on that. And I am I am able to make the required findings, so I am in favor of moving this one forward. Alright, looking for a motion.
So moved. Oh, in case...
Yes, go for it.
In case PL two zero two four dash one four nine, having been able to make the required findings, I move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an expansion to an existing minor vehicle repair facility, subject to the conditions and code requirements listed in the resolution.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. That item is a final decision. Well, yeah, that item is a final decision, subject to an appeal to the City Council. The second item, looking for a motion. Yes.
In case PL two zero two four dash one four nine, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the City Council approval of a major revision to final development plans for an addition onto an existing vehicle repair building, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. That motion goes directly to the City Council as a recommendation on the September thirtieth consent agenda of the City Council. Alright, item three also has a public hearing. However, I believe that the this applicant has withdrawn this item. Planner O'Day, do you have more information on that?
Thank you, Chair and Commission. Yes, we received notification today that the applicant desires not to move forward with this application, and they withdrew. So nothing further to add.
Alright, Mr. Toski, is there anything we need to do with that, or can we just leave that one?
Chair Albrecht with a withdrawal, there's no action necessary.
Alright, we will move on to item four. Item four also contains a public hearing, and we are looking at sixteen oh one and seventeen oh one American Boulevard for preliminary and final development plans for an approximately fifty-four thousand square foot auto dealership facility. Planner O'Day, you have the staff report.
Yes, thank you again, Chair and Commission. Moving along to item four for a proposal by Luther Kia. Sorry, this takes a moment to advance. There we go. Luther Kia is situated at the southeast corner of Knox and American Boulevard. Surrounding land uses are auto dealerships to the north and east, offices to the south, a newly constructed apartment building to the west, and new apartment building currently under construction to the west, and then South Town Shopping Center directly to the northwest. Motor vehicle sales in existence prior to January of two thousand and fifteen is a permitted use in the C five zoning district. And in the C five zoning district, there are very perscripted, prescriptive, excuse me, design standards that we'll get into in a couple slides. This property is guided regional commercial in our comprehensive plan, which is the most appropriate guidance for motor vehicle sales. And then furthermore, this property is located within the Penn American District Plan area, and so the proposed development must meet the intent, the goals and intents of the Penn American District Plan. And then lastly, the parcel is, the site is comprised of four separate parcels, and so a tax parcel combination to combine all the lots into one is required. So getting into the site plan, a couple highlights. The proposal is to demo all the buildings on site and construct a one-story, approximately fifty-nine thousand square foot building, which includes a mezzanine showroom, offices, repair, and car wash space. They're proposing to have access from West Eighty-first Street, Knox Avenue, and American Boulevard. And then their intent and hope is to keep the existing dealership open while this proposed building is under construction. So getting into the number of deviations that they're requesting, the first one relates to structure setbacks. So code requires a minimum of ten feet and a max of twenty feet setback along streets. And so the building does not meet the maximum twenty-foot setback along American Boulevard. And so staff is supportive of this flexibility measure, given the three street frontages, and also due to the challenge of meeting all structure setbacks on all sides with kind of a motor vehicles need for parking inventory and site circulation. So overall, staff is supportive of this flexibility. And then getting into exterior materials, they are proposing a mix of metal panels, glass, and brick, precast concrete. Um, precast concrete is a secondary material, which is limited to fifteen percent of each elevation. And so they're showing precast concrete as fifty-nine percent on the east elevation and twenty percent on the south and north elevations. Um, I have that kind of highlighted, um, down below in the images with the precast concrete in the kind of, um, lighter gray color. And so staff is supportive of the flexibility, due to precast being intricately colored and not needing to be painted. And then the street-facing sides are mostly compliant with our code. And then lastly, staff has supported flexibility for, um, a Luther project in, in Bloomington that have used, um, similar products. And then getting into building transparency, um, this is one thing that I wanted to highlight quickly that they're not requesting flexibility on, but it is one of those prescriptive design standards in the C five zoning district. And so code requires fifty percent transparent windows along the primary facades and then twenty-five percent along the secondary. And so what they're showing does meet, um, code, and this is ultimately to promote, um, active street level design. And so they're showing sixty-five percent on the north side, fifty-two percent on the south, and sixty-seven percent on the west. So overall, this does meet code requirements. And then getting into street enclosure, um, this is also one of the, um, prescriptive design standards in C five. So along, uh, primary street, which is Knox Avenue identified in the Penn American District Plan, at least fifty percent of the linear street frontage must be enclosed by buildings. And then along, um, secondary streets, which is West eighty-first Street, at least thirty percent of the building of the frontage, excuse me, must be enclosed by buildings. And so what they're proposing is, uh, twenty-nine percent along Knox Avenue and forty-two percent along West eighty-first Street. The AU first Street side is compliant, but the twenty-nine percent is not compliant. Um, and staff believes that this is inadequate, and so we are recommending a condition that, um, recommends increasing the building's street enclosure to match the southern facade of the building, uh, across Knox Avenue. And this is condition number seven. And so this would, um, the image on the right ultimately shows a, um, building extension area with the red line as kind of the match line. Um, and then just to note that the building extension area itself comes out to ten thousand square feet, we're not recommending that they expand ten thousand square feet. Rather, it's just to show kind of the extension point, um, that they could expand, um, up to that point through a building and expansion or reconfigure, um, the building. And so, um, yeah, the street enclosure with our recommendation increases that to about forty-seven percent. Uh, so the applicant has expressed difficulty in meeting the fifty percent street enclosure, and they do have a presentation after this to, I'm assuming, address some of those, um, issues. And so the condition to match the southern facade of the apartments across Knox Avenue would meet the intent and goals of the Penn American District Plan, as well as the C five zoning district. Um, so increasing the street enclosure to this degree would ultimately not conflict with accommodating a sewer easement, not conflict with maintaining operations in the existing building during construction, and also not appear to conflict with the floor plan, and ultimately would potentially serve as a benefit to expanding the showroom. And then lastly, getting into the last deviation that they're requesting is floor area ratio. The minimum floor area ratio is, um, point six for pre-existing auto dealerships. What they're proposing is point two-three, the existing FAR is point zero-nine. And so ultimately, to meet the point-six FAR, they would have to basically triple the size of the building footprint to a hundred and fifty-one thousand square feet. Um, and so the FAR, excuse me, the FAR may be reduced at the discretion of city council, provided the city council can make required found, findings outlined in city, sorry, in, uh, city code, I should say. Um, so the applicant states that they meet the findings due to expanding the site, providing high-paying jobs, bringing the site into conformance, and then accommodating a sanitary sewer pipe and easement to expand overall capacity within the Penn American District. And so here I have ha, have highlighted for you the, um, FAR findings that city council must make. Um, ultimately, I just want to highlight that staff is supportive of the FAR deviation, provided the street enclosure condition is satisfied. And then lastly, getting into screening, or screening, uh, landscaping and streetscape, excuse me. Um, the overall landscaping quantity is compliant with city code, and they're showing parking lot island trees and, um, screening, which is important for, um, those parking spaces that are um, adjacent to, um, the multifamily buildings across Knox Avenue. And then in the upper right corner, I have some images of examples they provided showing theft protection blocks kind of around the perimeter of the site. Um, these are to prevent, um, vehicle theft, and also they kind of act as a public, um, seating that would be available around the public, around the site. And then in the bottom corner are two pergolas that they're planning on installing, um, for, um, also public seating, um, and gathering, and just to note that these must stay outside of the easement and landscape yard. But overall, I think they've done a great job of kind of providing streetscape design through these, um, elements and landscaping. And then I have a couple renderings from the street, um, just showing kind of what the, what the building and site would look like. Um, with that, staff is recommending approval and the applicant and team is available for any questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. O'Day. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. Uh, Planner O'Day, um, noticed in the plan submitted by the applicant, and this may be a question for the applicant, um, that some light level plans were submitted. Is there a requirement for amount of light pollution off of a site? I'm thinking of the multifamily buildings close by, a lot of the, I think, all of the, um, light levels end at the property line on the plan.
Yes, uh, Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, they have provided photometric plans. Um, I have reviewed those, they do meet, um, our, our minimum light levels. Our, um, parking lot lights do have to be ninety-degree cutoff, and so the actual light source can't be visible, um, from the public view. So, um, what they're showing does meet that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you ma'am Chair. Uh, Ms. O'Day, uh, it's my understanding that automotive sales are permitted in C five if it's an existing use prior to January of twenty fifteen. So that includes, um, even if they've demoed the whole building and then replacing it, that, could you just speak more to that?
Um, Chair, Commissioner Cookton, what's exactly your question?
On your very first slide, maybe, it's the, it's the first slide after your title slide. That one, so the first bullet point, motor vehicle sales prior to twenty fifteen is permitted in C five, and I think after C five, it's maybe conditional or not permitted, so they're demo, they're removing the entire existing use and then building it back, so that doesn't nullify that, that date or that provision?
Uh, Chair, Commissioner Cookton, no, so they can, it's still the exact same use, so it's not a change in use. So they can continue, uh, the use of the property with motor vehicle sales.
Am I getting confused with something else where, like, when something becomes legal non-conforming, we, uh, we always say like they can't expand their business anymore, what am I being confused with? Perhaps Mr. Mark Agard can clear my brain here.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookton. Yeah, the, the issue in this case, the intent of that standard, having that, say, in existence prior to January twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, that's the date at which it was rezoned. And the intent was that any existing car dealer use within the C five district could continue and continue to modify, but, uh, no new or additional sites, uh, within the C five district would be allowed. Um, so that, that was the intent of that language.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Um, I have one question, and it relates to actually this map, so this is great. Um, Ms. O'Day, C five is also what it is zoned to the north and to the west of the site, that northwest corner, that is also zoned C five, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, based on our last meeting where we had a, an application in this very similar area, it is guided for more intense use, is that correct?
This subject site or the?
The northwest corner, right there.
Is that also regional commercial?
Uh, Chair Albrecht, yes, actually the guiding, I believe, is the same both on that portion of the South Town site and on the site. Regional commercial in both cases.
Okay, that was my question. Alright, would the applicant like to speak on this item? If you could introduce yourself to us, that would be great.
You want me to write and talk at this age? Hi, my name is Linda McGinty. I'm with, um, the Luther Automotive Group. And, um, first of all, um, Madam Albrecht, um, Commissioners, Staff, on behalf of our company, I want to thank you. Um, we've been pretty longstanding in the city of Bloomington and, um, have been very grateful for, um, the continued efforts on all sides to allow us to stay, uh, where we are and to serve the members of your community and many other communities, uh, members who come here also as a result of our stores being in this location. Um, I just wanted to touch on, um, a couple little things, and we have a few others, um, with us that are going to address some of those very specific concerns, um, that were brought up. Car dealerships are franchised, um, you know, to manufacturers. So, there are franchise laws and very specific ones to car dealerships. Um, e- each state has their own set of, of rules. You may think that, oh my goodness, you know, there were quite a few requirements in this zoning district that make it, um, a fair bit challenging for a car dealership to exist in this same location. Um, prescriptive was the, the term used, and, and it truly is prescriptive. Um, nonetheless, um, it would be very challenging and, um, might be nearly impossible to just simply find another location for Bloomington Kia. It's, it's not easy, we have to be within a certain, uh, mileage distance from our competitors. Um, and it's, and again, that's all guided by state law. So, staying here was very important to us. Um, we realize that a lot of things have changed in the time since, um, we worked with, um, Planner Mark Agard in crafting, um, this C five change. That'll be addressed. And again, we hope that you'll see that we have worked really hard to try and bring, um, a significant and major improvement to this site that we think the city will be proud of, um, that we think will work well with the neighbors in the area, and still also bring many, um, so for instance, we repair on average three hundred vehicles a day. And these are people coming from, you know, all over the metro to get their vehicle serviced or to purchase a vehicle. So, um, you know, it helps your restaurants and your shopping in the area. Um, and we'll touch on the other positive things, but I hope you'll see that, um, that we're bringing, um, something that'll vastly improve what is there. So, I'll just finish.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McGinty? Any other members from the applicant team wish to speak? I believe there's a presentation as well.
Good evening. I'm Steve Sabrasky from Landform Professional Services. Um, my address is listed here, I've signed in already. Um, hopefully I can get this slideshow to work, so bear with me please. Uh, as Linda mentioned, uh, we do have other members of our team to speak, uh, just in a little bit more detail, uh, some of the items that, um, Ms. O'Day has, uh, presented before, uh, us. So hopefully this will work.
If not, you can tell me next slide.
Next slide. Alright, so I thought I'd start out, you know, briefly just talking about, you know, some of the site constraints and how we kind of arrived at the, the design we've, uh, presented for you. Um, again, it's a, it's a challenging site, go ahead, next slide.
I think it should work, try it now.
I think so, okay. Oh, wonderful, alright. Um, a- as it was, it was stated, you know, there are a number of constraints on this property that we had to evaluate to develop a, a new, um, rather reconstructed dealership. Um, some of those are, are listed here, and, and I don't want to minimize any of them because they've all played a significant impact in, uh, uh, citing the building, um, considering some other constraints, future improvements from, um, the sanitary sewer extension that is likely or, or necessary to happen to facil, facilitate additional development in the Penn American District and throughout the city. Um, I, I, I wanted to also point out, you know, this colored map is, it looks kind of nice, but there, there are literally thirty-three percent of the site is encumbered by, uh, some sort of easement. And, you know, it, it's important to note because, you know, this, it, it, it's kind of makes the building, you know, location kind of paramount to where, how it interacts with the rest of the, the site. I'll go to the next slide. Uh, some of those easements will be, um, we will propose to vacate some of them, and we will in turn have to dedicate new to accommodate some of the new facilities. Um, again, one of those being a sanitary sewer extension, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. Um, so, here's the aerial image of the existing, uh, site, as was noted, there are three existing buildings on the property. And when accumulated, they are, you know, a FAR of point zero-nine, so far below the requirement of, uh, zero point six. Coincidentally, the, uh, the required, and Brandon Grease from Grease Architects will speak to this, um, facility requirements would yield a twenty-seven thousand square foot building for this operation. Well, you'll see that our, our proposed building is, is actually quite a bit larger than that, but actually pretty close to what is on site today. So these three buildings, again, were, were constructed in separate projects over a period of time, separate plats, um, completely different functions, they weren't always auto dealerships, in fact, some of them, I think one of them was even a Panik in House addition at one point. Uh, this provides, you know, some unique challenges for the, the site to operate currently, you know, staff having to shuffle between buildings, uh, maintaining property with, you know, a lot of obstructions, uh, confusing layout for customers and trucks entering and exiting the site, making it difficult for vehicle deliveries, emergency services, et cetera. Um, all those things are, 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 is a challenge to the, to the site and, and, uh, and it's not the only reason why things have to change on this property, but certainly a reason why the majority of the site has to be impacted by, by this redevelopment. Um, some other things to note, again, this is largely, you know, not compliant with any of the, the C five zoning standards, you know, there's, there's no stormwater management, um, very little landscaping. Uh, there is the remnant of the old Irving, uh, right-of-way and street on the east side of the site, which was uh, turned back, uh, but retained as, as easement, um, I think around two thousand and seven or so. Um, and another of other items I can point out in a bit later. Again, there's also four parcels that were developed over a period of, um, a few years. Lastly, there are sixteen existing service bays, which doesn't meet the need of, uh, operations currently. So the proposed building and site layout is, is in front of you. Um, some, again, keynotes that we have, um, I think, attempted to accomplish, and we, we've, as Linda so eloquently described, we've, we've done our best to really try to meet the intent and the goals of the Penn American District and the C five zoning. Um, unfortunately, you know, with an auto dealership, it's, it's so important for them to have multiple access points into the building for, you know, service, vehicle deliveries, uh, trash, all these things, you know, which are typically, you know, provided around the entirety of the building, and we're, we're simply not. the building, and we're simply not able to accommodate that. So we did our best to, you know, meet the street enclosure requirements, and this was kind of the result of that. One point, we also did strategically locate, you know, the customer interfacing elements with Knox, as we thought that was an appropriate location to put it. That way, you know, we were also focusing the trash and the car wash and the shop further away from the residential sites across the street. So we thought that was important to note here as well, having a mitigation for any, you know, sound impacts to the neighbors. Some other key points that we have on this redevelopment, of course, we are compliant with the majority, if not all, of the landscape requirements and any that are lacking, we're simply easily able to accommodate. We have 102 trees now, actually, we added one tree through a resubmital process, but we are exceeding the required. A lot of that is clustered around the perimeter, and Josh Popein, our landscape architect, will kind of speak to the streetscape elements and the design that went into the consideration for all of those items. The stormwater management will be housed underground, so on the northeast corner of the site. I think we all recognize that's a significant investment. It allows for really the densification and utilization of land, which would otherwise be consumed by a pond that would be, you know, above grade. So, you know, it's not uncommon for, of course, commercial sites and in particular auto dealerships to utilize underground stormwater management for their stormwater needs. And then lastly, again, it was mentioned that the existing building will be present while we construct this building. That's actually, I don't say the most important reason why this building is kind of cited the way it is, but it certainly had a significant impact. We did consider many different iterations of this building layout. We've been working on this site for the better part of almost a decade, you know, to go back to the rezoning efforts from 2015, we were already actively looking at how we can reconstruct this site to better function for Luther. So this is a long time coming, and we feel pretty proud of what we're presenting to you. But having the building on the south half of the site will allow for a project that's only phased in two phases rather than trying to have a temporary setup with sales trailers and makeshift shop operations. So it expedites the construction process and provides a better experience for customers and employees during the construction process. This is incredibly difficult to read from here, I know, but it was included in the packet, so hopefully you had a chance to look at it. But we did sort of provide a complete, as we saw it, summary of where we were compliant or not compliant with the city code in C5. And it was really a comparison of the existing condition versus the proposed condition. I think Liz identified the items which we will be seeking flexibility. But, you know, the goal here is to move this, you know, closer towards compliance, and I think it's easily demonstratable that this is, that we are doing exactly that. So again, I know it's hard to read here, but it is included in the packet. And a few things I think I should mention regarding this. Well, I'll let Mr. Popein talk about the landscape items because those are probably the most significant. So I'm here for additional questions if you have any as they come up, but I'll hand it off to Josh.
Thank you.
I'm Josh Popein, landscape architect with Landform Professional Services, working together with Steve very closely in our office and the rest of our team, obviously. I'm just going to get into the landscape and streetscape a little more detailed. Ms. O'Day did say we are in compliance, which is true, but this site and this... Sorry, there we go. This site and this location in the Penn American District, we think, needs quite a bit more oomph, and that's what we're going to propose to provide for you guys. So I just want to walk through the streetscape in a little detail because looking at a plan, it's pretty hard to understand, so I'm just kind of, kind of break out the layers on what actually is going out there in the public realm so you can kind of understand a little bit better. So quickly, the first thing is we have this big public area, this big area of need for pedestrians, which right now on the site is very much lacking. It's kind of a inhospitable, unfriendly kind of place. So we're going to start enhancing that, and one of the ways we can do that is to offer some places to sit. So we'll bring in some benches along Knox, which is the street that's been identified by city staff as something they want to see very pedestrian-friendly. So obviously benches can attract people, people can sit and linger. So you can see there on the plan, we're going to bring in benches along the way. Also, access into the site right now as a person walking or even on a bike is a little sketchy, so we have an accessible walkway dedicated for people to come off the public sidewalk up right to the main door of the site without having to travel through any kind of pavement or conflicting with any cars. So that's definitely an upgrade to what's going on right there currently. And of course, there's a public stair for people that don't need the ramp to get off the sidewalk up into the, up into the main door of the building. So, you know, we're really trying to enhance this uninvited area, this, sorry, excuse me, this very inhospitable kind of area for pedestrians and try to, try to make that a little bit more friendly. So once we do kind of the meat and bones... It was mentioned earlier, we're doing these stone blocks as benches, but we're doing another layer of those blocks throughout the site, which act as kind of an aesthetic to add into the massive amounts of plantings we're going to do out there. So another, another visual element to kind of, you know, make a more inviting streetscape. But they do have a dual purpose that Ms. O'Day did allude to, in that they actually are spaced and oriented, so vehicles on-site can't be stolen. And that's, that's actually a big concern of auto dealerships in Luther in particular. They do have a lot of theft, and people are brazen enough where they come onto site, steal a car, and drive it right off and away. So these blocks, while they look very nice and they'll match in with the architectural colors and materials, they actually have kind of a dual purpose. So that's kind of a win for, for both the city and, and the client. So adding another layer, up in the northwest corner, we are proposing another seating area with a couple pergolas because this area, this intersection appears really wide and open. If you're familiar with it, it's kind of very vast, there's not a whole lot going on out there, and we think if we can do some vertical elements out here, we're really adding to kind of anchor that corner into this area and try to, you know, create some identity for the, for that intersection and also for Luther. So what we propose is a couple pergolas with, again, the stone block benches underneath them, and the verticality kind of matches in with the verticality of the existing Luther Monument sign, pylon sign, excuse me. So we kind of have a little bit beefier corner up there, and of course, the entire area is going to be planted heavily around it to kind of match in what we're doing with the rest of the boulevards. A big component of this project is the plantings, and we've gone well beyond what you might otherwise see at a car dealership specifically, but this site and this location in the city, we think requires it. So we're doing a ton of native grasses, perennials, shrubs, all in this public zone along 81st and Knox, and even a portion of American Boulevard. And when we're all said and done, 94% of our plants in the ground will be native plants. So we're really heavy on the native plants, you know, they require less water, that's another little point in the Penn American District plan. They attract pollinators, which you hear in the news all the time, this is, this is a good thing. And it just greatly enhances the urban landscape, you know, visually and environmentally. So we think we can do a lot better than just doing grass with a row of shrubs to kind of screen the vehicles. Our plants, whether they're grasses or perennials or shrubs, all meet the city's requirement for height, so they all kind of add a layer of screening between the public sidewalk and the public street and the parking areas. So when it's all said and done, it'll really be, you know, very much a kind of kaleidoscope of plants and color and seasonal interest out there that I think will be really, really enhance this area. And last but not least, street trees. City code does require street trees, which we have along three of the four sides, I think it's every 30 feet, so those are in as required by code. Mostly native species. One of the species that is not native is from Iowa, so, you know, close, but not quite Minnesota, but, you know, it'll grow well here. And then obviously, we have the interior trees, two trees in each island, trees along the east side, so we're pretty heavily, heavily stacked with trees. This does meet city code, so we're not going well beyond or well under it, but we're definitely going well beyond what's, what's out there now. So street trees are obviously adding to that rhythm along the street and kind of creating some cohesiveness to the district overall, and environmental benefits of, you know, reducing our heat islands and increasing shade, I think is something that everybody can, can relate to, so. So when it's all come together, this is what you see, and looking at this plan, as I said, it's, it's hard to pull out the different elements, but I think walking you through, like, like I just did, hopefully it helps you understand what's going on out there. I guess I'll answer any questions if you have any, otherwise we'll send it on to our next team member.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. The first one, I believe, is related to landscaping. On the building elevations, on the partial west elevation and the south elevation, there are ACM, what appears to be ACM inlays that have something that's green, the shape of a tree. Are those additional plantings within a box, or are those painted on the building?
Those are planters integral to the building, and we're proposing some evergreen shrubs in those planters where appropriate, just as another element to kind of break up the face of the building, so you have a little softer, softer face on some of those building sides.
Thank you. My second question unfortunately is a two-parter. The accessible route off of Knox, is that to tie into the existing grades on the existing sidewalk on Knox?
Yep.
Did you study it all away, by my count, and I'm just doing math on a piece of paper here, it's about 108 feet from the stairs. Did you guys do any study to see if it would be possible to bring that accessible route closer and still be in compliance with ADA? And sorry, that might, yeah, a question for Mr. Sabraski.
Yeah, Chair, members of the commission. We didn't look at, you know, making it the smallest length possible, of course. You know, depending on where the pedestrian is coming from, they could be coming from the north, in which case it might make sense for them to get on to that portion of the sidewalk at that point and the same travel distance, right? The difference would be if they're coming from the south and they have to loop around a little bit longer to get there. I will say, it is, it is close, you know, but we like to give a little bit of tolerance for construction as well, so if a sidewalk is built just slightly steeper than it needs to be, then, then it doesn't meet ADA compliance and they have to rip it out and redo it. So extending the walk as long as it is allows for a little bit more flex, or construction tolerance and flexibility. Additionally, it's sort of a logical place to extend the walk, so not only a person that is needing to use the accessible route, but somebody that might be parking on the perimeter parking stalls could also utilize the whole walk if they're parked at the far north end and not have to walk through the parking lot to get to the store. One other point I wanted to mention about the site plan here in particular, too, is we did move the access on Knox a little bit further to the north, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One was to preserve that corridor for a potential sanitary sewer easement or extension through the project site, which we are still in discussions with the city on how that's going to be arranged. It's not known at this, at this point in time. But it also ends up pushing, you know, a division of the site further to the north, allowing for customers to park closer to the stall, so they don't have to pass traffic as they enter the site nearly as much. So you have kind of a safe spot for customers to park and kind of leisurely walk around the site without having to worry about cross-traffic. So anyways, hopefully that answered your question.
It did. Thank you very much to both of you.
And I think Josh is... There, just done, so Brandon will take over from here, I guess.
Good evening. Brandon Grease, Grease Architectural, architect for Luther Automotive Group. Appreciate you having us here tonight. Trying not to repeat too much of what we did, but as you can see, this is a very unique design due just to the quantities of the prescriptive design requirements and more so, you know, we know we have the city, we talked about the city requirements, we talked about the existing site constraints bordered by three streets, we have existing site operations to maintain, and we have the easements to deal with. More so, we have a Kia manufacturer that we have to appease as well, and owner needs as well. So we were really looking at those four main factors when we were designing this site. Overall, I think we talked about how it ended up in the southwest corner. We did do a rather extensive iteration looking at the northwest corner as well, ultimately ruling that out just because of the phasing in order to keep the existing operations going. So the southwest corner design iteration, really because of the building envelope requirements, set us up in a modified L-shaped building. So Knox was identified as a primary street and 81st is a secondary street. You can see we did hit the secondary street requirements. Looking at the building envelope as far as hitting the 50% along Knox, I can tell you we did everything we could do. Kia requirements, it's a 27,000 square foot building. We looked at it and said, well, how much can our business model take as far as building size go? Because building size directly related to cost. So we ended up just shy of 60,000, so double the Kia requirements, putting most of that into the retail side of it. So our showroom box is more than double the requirements. With that, we also had to accommodate the proportions of the showroom that Kia requires, so we have five consultation offices, lounge access, which is a center, center lean to the, to the lounge aligned with the reception and the front desk, and then a sales manager. So we were just appreciate Ms. O'Day's comments on the building enclosure, but it's really difficult to change those proportions because we're staying within the Kia required proportions for that showroom, and we've already doubled the size of the requirements of the showroom. So just want to take that under consideration. When we did the doubling of the building, that did help us with the FAR and appreciate staff support on that, so I don't want to get too far into that. Looking at materials, articulation, transparency, height on the city requirements, I feel like we are meeting, are close to meeting all those requirements, so again, appreciate staff support on that. The owner requirements, again, this configuration allowed us to make sure we were mitigating noise the best we could, keeping the service closest to their other automotive operations away from the residents. We have a fully enclosed service department that'll be air-conditioned, so there'll be no open air, so you won't get the mechanic noise. The car wash is on the far side of the building, again, fully enclosed, trying to limit, limit noise to the neighbors. So we also had to take into consideration the functional requirements, which Steve talked a little bit, but we do need circulation throughout to get vehicles in and out of the service reception and the service department and the car wash. And again, just overall improved experience for customers and employees. And again, just overall improved experience for customers and employees, so we really are in need of a new building here, um, one that we can all agree on that's going to benefit um the public, the community, uh, the employees and Luther Automotive. So, any questions about the design itself?
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner White.
Thank you Chair. Certainly not a requirement, but I'm wondering, looking at that lovely flat roof, whether you've thought about solar power at all for your operation?
We do consider solar power for all Luther projects, so if it does not go in, now it is designed to go in, so we add a, a five to six pounds per square foot loading requirement on the Joyce, so they can put it in at any time.
Other questions? Commissioner Cunningham.
Again, I have two. I promise I'm not trying to stump you guys. Uh, two quick questions. Um, on your plan, submitted plan sheet A 101, uh, you have three overhead doors on the southeast corner of the building uh that lead into a trash recycling room? Is that strictly for trash recycling? Is there any shipping receiving through that area with the overhead doors?
That is not shipping receiving, so typically we'll have a skid steer stored in there for snow removal and then recycling, trash, tire storage. So that's, y- you know, the size and, and amount of access to it is just because each, each individual door would allow them to access individual components.
Excellent, uh, thank you. Uh, second question was, does the existing uh Kia dealership have a car wash inside of the facilities? I'm seeing a nod from Ms. McGinty, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for any part of the, yes, Commissioner McGovern?
Thank you Chair. Um, I'm a little concerned about the, the drive, um, the driveway on American Boulevard coming into the parking lot. Does that exist today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, apparently I don't have my eyes open when I'm passing Kia, so uh I will pay more close attention. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Any other, any additional questions for any of the applicant team? Oh.
One more presenter.
More, alright.
I promised to sign in after, how's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you, uh, Chair Albrecht, uh commissioners, I, I'm, hopefully I can bring this all home and, and do it efficiently, but I think the, the fact that you have five presenters tonight really goes to how important this is to Luther Companies, to Luther Automotive Group. They've been in this location for a very long time, they've been in the city for a very long time, and so what I'm really going to try and tie together is what happened ten years ago and how this really fulfills that vision. Because I think, you know, some of the commissioners' questions indicate, well, you know, this is a C-five site, isn't it supposed to be intensely developed? And, you know, isn't it one of the locations where we expect to have higher buildings and higher density and all of that, and street enclosures? And, and the answer is yes, but for what happened ten years ago between the city and the auto dealers, that uh might be the case. Um, but it is not a non-conforming site. It is a permitted use allowed as a matter of right through a, a fair amount of negotiation um with the city council, the city attorney's office, the planning office. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, I hope to be brief, but I want to be, I want to be thorough in presenting this, because I think it really goes to the questions that are still on the table. And, and, and so, I'm going to put those questions on the table, so you can think about those as we kind of wrap up this presentation. So one thing that we're requesting is that you delete, I believe it's uh number seven, regarding the street enclosure, uh, because we don't believe we can comply with that at, at the end of the day, um, and have this project go forward. The other is, is much simpler, it's a tweak of the condition regarding the requirement for the sanitary sewer. Um, the, the applicant is fully, uh, wants to fully cooperate with that, it's just a matter of timing. Uh, one is that you can't, you can't, um, you can't dedicate an easement until you vacate an easement. So this says prior to the vacation of easements, we would be dedicating easement. How it actually works is the easements are vacated, then you put on the new easement, and, and we, it has to be in a mutually agreeable location, so it isn't, it, it isn't a one-sided deal, and I think those are tweaks that are pretty typical. Um, I mean, I've done a lot of this work with the city. Luther Automotive is fully agreeable to providing that easement, it just has to be in the right location, and it has to be done after the easements are vacated. So that, that would simply be a condition of the vacation. So I wanted to put those two um points out there because they affect the conditions of approval, and I want you to think about them as we go through the final part of our presentation. So starting with the background, in 2014, um, the city staff came forward with a proposal, and I believe that it was that auto dealers would be non-conforming to Commissioner Cookton's comment, is this a non-conforming use or is it something else? And um that was the original proposal, probably because the Penn American Plan envisions, you know, taller buildings, urban design, and the like. And the auto dealers came forward, and the planning commissioners and the city council were sympathetic to the fact that these businesses have been here for a long time, these businesses serve a legitimate use. And as was stated, these businesses can't simply go up and, and, and locate somewhere else. If you've ever tried to locate an auto dealership anywhere in the Twin Cities, it's a very difficult task. And so what you have then is a proposition that if these au- auto dealers cannot redevelop their sites, fully redevelop their sites, they're going to make use of these sites in ways that would be um simply rehabbing existing buildings. And, and not perhaps putting in underground stormwater and the type of landscaping you see here, this holistic change, which is intended to move towards uh compliance. I'm going to quote, um, one of the things that was said, um, I won't, I have lots of quotes, but I won't, I won't roll those out. I did a full review of the record. Um, one of the quotes that was made, um, I believe by the staff, it might have been Mr. Markergard, he was heavily involved in that discussion, uh, was very helpful in that discussion. "To respond to property owners' concerns, the city council directed staff to look into approaches to minimize negative impacts on existing properties and businesses while ensuring continued progress," and that's, I'm going to double un- underscore that, "progress on implementation of the Penn American District Plan." And so it's, it's what was said by our team, it's moving towards, and, and there's very significant movement towards that. Uh, the only way that you could legitimately completely satisfy the requirements is to drop a brand-new building of several stories on this site, and it wouldn't be an auto dealership, okay? So the result was that the dealers, this is on um January twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-fifteen, the result was, on the date the ordinance was approved, these dealerships became a permitted use as a, as a matter of right, an exception if you will, not a non-conforming use, but actually an exception to what otherwise calls for high density, what otherwise calls for several stories and, and the like. And so this is a legal exception that the city council sought to put into law to ensure that these dealerships had a right to redevelop, okay? And, and so, and I, I don't think that's missed on the staff, the staff is recommending approval, uh, the staff has done a, a lot to justify what we feel is a very good plan and appropriate deviations. One of the areas where we disagree, and, and frankly, I don't think it can be resolved by a condition of approval, is on street enclosure. And the code says, "The highest degree of enclosure should," I underline should, because that's a permissive word, "be provided on the street uh deemed to be primary by the staff." Well, that is great, right? That, that's a, that's a great goal, and it, and it should be achieved to the extent that it can be achieved. Uh, but you've heard tonight, and that's why this presentation has involved four or five presenters, you've heard tonight how much consideration went into where the buil- building was located, and why it was located there, and how it provides public benefit, it also provides benefit to the development. And so you take into account brand standards and city standards and owner's objectives in providing for easements and sewer access, and you ultimately find the best location with the best uh building configuration. So, as, as my comments highlight, this is not a mixed, mixed-use project, this is not a multi-story, multi-family project, you see much of that occurring in the district, and you'll see more of that. I think the Penn American Plan is a good plan, it's a solid plan, but what the council did in that grand bargain, if you will, with the auto dealers is say, "You can continue to exist here. In fact, we want, we want our rules to be flexible enough that you can evolve and grow and, and, and design a building that can be built for solar, or a building that has public amenities." In fact, we've heard tonight how this building exceeds brand standards, in many ways exceeds the standards of the city code, a, a highly prescriptive code, as, as it's been described several times tonight, even by the staff. Um, so it exceeds in many regards a highly prescriptive code, a couple places it needs deviations which are supported, and, and one area where it needs a deviation is in the street enclosure, and, and, and we believe it's appropriate. One of the things that uh Ms. McGinty pointed out in our discussions is, if you look at the building that's being constructed on the south, the, the building, the showroom was actually designed to match, to have a match line with that building. Um, so that's one thing that wasn't uh brought out by staff. But the idea that we can somehow add ten thousand square feet of, I don't know, a, a super sho- a super showroom, if you will, or suddenly just take all the proportions out of the internal uh floor plan to meet this enclosure standard, it just doesn't work. I'm telling you, on behalf of my client, it doesn't work. You've heard from technical people that it doesn't work, and it's a bridge too far. And, and, and I, and I don't believe it will be done. I don't believe through any condition or persuasion that we're going to see the owner say, let's add ten thousand square feet to satisfy the city. We did have some discussions around, well, what if we do a wing wall, and then what if we do some other things? And, and all of those things sound good, and, and it really shouldn't come from a lawyer, right? Because I should stick to my, stick in my lane, a- as it were. But, but ultimately, adding a wing wall for decorative purposes or to, to try and satisfy, arbitrarily satisfy this enclosure, it creates spaces then where folks can hide behind, and you, and you know, um, the dealers are targets uh of theft, very organized theft. And so, so creating, you know, hiding that, that glass front with a wing wall or some other device to create, you know, some sort of match line, also was kind of a, a false imperative and, and ultimately set aside. So what you have is, is something that's very thoughtful, uh, moves very, makes great progress towards district standards. District standards that you have to understand were not designed for a dealership, they were designed for multi-story, mixed-use buildings, and yet we are going as far as we can possibly go to get to those standards. Finally, I have um spent a little time looking for this, this is the uh, the final night of four or five months of discussion in twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen, on how are we going to accommodate the existing auto dealers who have, who now have a right to be here, but believed then that they had a right to be there, and this, this grand plan. And again, Mr. Markergard was presenting, his presentation covered the following slides. Auto dealer amendments minimize negative impacts on existing businesses, the proposed changes do that. Put potential for further FAR flexibility and other flexibility within the, in the district. And, and you then had the dealers getting up and saying, "Thank you." They, they didn't, it wasn't like, uh, it wasn't a kumbaya moment, it was, it was "Thank you for hearing us, and um, thank you for accommodating us." And so, so one of the presenters on behalf of Lupiant, Mr. Eric Galant, said, "Thank the council for the very serious consideration of the issues. While point six FAR is still a high bar, they're grateful for that and the exceptions." And the exceptions, that's an important point, because throughout this discussion, what everybody said, including the city council and the planning commission, is that if this is going to work, it's going to require flexibility. We, we can't have a straitjacket on, on these prescriptive ordinances and have it work at the end of the day. Mr. Beck, then representing Luther Companies, said, "Thank the council, the planning commission, the staff working through the concerns." He said that they would have preferred to stay C-one, which is what they were zoned, and, and they would have been able to do a, a more traditional dealership. This is not a traditional dealership, by the way. It may, may look to, like that to you, but this is not a, this is not how you'd build in a greenfield. He said that we would have preferred to stay zone C-one, but the C-four and C-five zoning along with the text amendment allows them to come forward with a proposal if and when they're ready to do so, and they appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, in summing up, we appreciate the opportunity to do that. This, this idea of a compliance enclosure is what I'm going to call it, this idea of an artifice, something that's not needed in the plan, really doesn't give us the opportunity to do what was agreed to ten years ago. It, it creates a plan that is not sustainable from a building standpoint, from a cost standpoint, from an employee standpoint, from really any standpoint that we would measure on our side of the, the conversation. So, I, I, I really am grateful to the staff um for their hard work on this. I know that Linda McGinty and the owner are really grateful to this team, because they have really pressed the envelope. Um, you know, you're not involved in all the discussions that we're involved in and, and moving pieces around and, and trying to make something work that is like a, you know, a, a three-level chessboard or some, you know, some impossible game to solve, uh, one that I couldn't cer- couldn't certainly solve. Um, but, but they've done that, and we believe that, and we're very, very proud of what the team has brought forward, and we ask you to understand where we're coming from. And, and, you know, you know, not to, not to end on a negative note, because I, that's not really a good way to end a presentation, but you have to ask yourself, um, if, if this doesn't go forward, then, then what? You know, then are we rehabbing buildings? Uh, i- is a new resident across the street, would you rather look at this, this proposal or what's there today? Because really what happens is, auto dealers can't give up their sites, they have to figure out how to use them because they're so hard to come by. So you're left just like, okay, and, and any property owner would say, "Well, I guess we got, I guess we're stuck rehabbing those buildings." So, um, but really, to, to go back to ending on a positive note, I, I think that this is, this is what the city council and the planning commission and the auto dealers all had in mind in January of twenty-fifteen when they said, "Okay, good job, we, we think we've got something we can work with." So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isa.
Um, I may have missed this in the packet, but was a SAC determination submitted for the new plans to that council?
It will be, I believe.
It will be. Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and uh, uh, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner, um, one of the things that we have been told, uh, it hasn't been raised tonight, but you know, you've heard from other applicants about the sewer issue in the Penn American District, uh, we have been told that there is, and I think it's in the staff report, that there is capacity to serve this project. So notwithstanding the city's um improvements and, and concerns about sewer capacity, this project could go forward in the near term.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant team? Commissioner Cunningham.
Sorry, this is kind of a applicant team and staff. I, I just want to get some clarity on um your discussion point on uh conditional, condition of approval number three, the vacation of the existing easements. Uh, it reads, "Prior to the vacation, prior to vacation of existing easements on the site, uh, on the site easements must be dedicated to allow for future planned sanitary sewer capacity improvement projects." Um, so you had mentioned something along the lines of the easements need to be vacated, and then the new ones need to be put in place. Can you walk us through that a little bit?
Sure.
And then, uh, I think a member of the city legal staff is here, if you'd like to comment as well?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can just talk.
Well, let, let me, let me, uh, Kevin, let me just, uh, uh, Chair Albrecht, um, and commissioners, I'm going to first answer the question because it was directed at me, and then uh the assistant city attorney can certainly respond. I'm not seated yet. So, um, the, the request is that we simply state that as a condition of vacation, that a new easement be granted, and that it be provided in a mutually agreeable location. So that's our request. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so Chair and Commissioner Cunningham, what the, the issue is, is you can't dedicate something when that exists already, so you have to vacate it then dedicate it, so it's a, it's a timing issue is what we're, we're discussing, so you have to vacate it then dedicate it, so there's just a timing.
Got it, so, so.
The wording was acceptable, yeah.
So the wording of item three, or condition three is acceptable to the applicant? I just want to be clear on that, to make sure if we're.
No, they want to change to, so it doesn't say prior to, so you can, you can educate the record about what they actually would want is wording.
Yeah, if you could, if you could propose wording.
Absolutely, um, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll just read it. So the condition as modified would say, "As a condition of vacation of existing easements on the site, easements must be dedicated to allow for future planned sanitary sewer capacity improvement projects in a location that is mutually agreeable." So that's, that's our proposed condition. And then we also requested that. And then we also requested that condition seven be deleted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Toski.
Thank you. I actually have one question for staff before we move on, and may want the applicant to respond on this as well. Ms. O'Day, would you go back to your slide showing more detail about the condition number seven and the percentages? I just want to refresh my memory on that. And would you please describe what the requirements are, and what, what is actually being proposed here?
Sure. So Chair Albrecht, what code requires in C5 zoning district is that along a primary street, which is Knox Avenue, which has been identified as the primary street in Penn American District Plan, at least 50% of the linear street frontage must be enclosed by buildings. And then along a secondary street, which is West 81st Street, at least 30% of the linear frontage must be enclosed by buildings. They meet the secondary frontage along West 81st Street, which is 42%, but they're not meeting the street enclosure along Knox Avenue. They're required to meet 50%. They're proposing 29%.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Griffiths said something regarding the staff indicating which would be the primary street. Is that correct? Or is that primary street dictated by the Penn American Plan?
The primary street is determined by the Penn American District Plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Markergard, is there anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, we have one individual online, and let's check in with him to see if they'd like to testify. Call-in user with the number 612, or starting with 612-600, would you like to comment now?
Would the call-in user with the number starting 612-600 like to testify on this item, item I think that looks like a no. All right. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, I, I worry that if, I, I understand the concern about the FAR, the frontages, but I, I do feel that the applicant has put forth a good faith effort to meet the city requirements and our codes. I, I'm very concerned that if this proposed change in the finish for the site is not approved, that this site could turn into something similar to the Mississippi dealership just to the north, you know, a closed vacant building. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner White.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I, I understand the proposed change in language to condition number three regarding the location that's mutually agreeable, and I guess I'm just curious about what happens to the permit if there is no mutually agreed-upon location for the sewer line. So I'm curious about sort of what would happen in that case if you couldn't find a mutually agreed-upon.
Great question. Would the staff like to weigh in on that, or Mr. Toski?
I would defer to either Public Works staff or Mr. Toski, if you could.
Thank you, Ms. Law.
Chair, Commissioner White, don't thank me yet, because I don't know that I know the answer to that, but I don't anticipate that being an issue. There are multiple different routes that we can discuss, and I think we will be able to work with the party. We've worked with them in the past to find mutually agreeable solutions. So while it is a negotiation point, we're going to have to go back and forth once we actually get authorization from city council to start the feasibility study. There are several alternatives that I can name right now. I think we will be able to find an alternative that works. And if we don't, I think we'll come back to planning commission and city council and say, "We weren't able to do that." But I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Thank you. Any other question, discussion, yes? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. You know, I normally am up here as the champion of floor area ratio, and how important it is, and especially in our development districts. I think it's tremendously important that we hold to the plans and standards we've set forth, because if we don't, then, then what's the point? However, I've also sat up here for a lot of years and said that the planning commission is the body of practicality, because there's no one in, no one lower in government than us. And so we should be able to see things as they are, and be able to make exceptions, and, and find reasonability in applications. And in this case, I think, as much as I would like to see the increased street frontage, when I look at the renderings, I do think it's impractical to put another wing on that building. When you're looking at the front face of that dealership, you're going to take a lot of the visibility away, and I can understand why the applicant wouldn't want to do that. And not that it's about what the applicant wants, but I think it's a practical, I think it's impractical to add that wing on. As much as I would like it, I, I'm not sure it's a practical addition to this application. And so I'm supportive of, I'm supportive of the deviation of floor area ratio. I think, I mean, there's no way they're going to triple the size of this building, so I'm supportive of that. I'm supportive of not adding the extra wing on, and I'm also supportive of the deviation in exterior materials that was proposed in the staff report. So with all those things, I'm, I am supportive of this application.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I meant to note one other thing I wanted to say. I appreciate the applicant's work on the corner nearest the Orange Line Station, the extra effort with the seating area there. I thought that was a nice touch and appreciated by the city.
Thank you. I will add my two cents here. I, I agree with Commissioner Cookton. I think that, you know, as someone who reads a lot of bills in their work, the idea of should versus shall is very important. And I, I too agree that it creates a barrier for this owner to do business and to improve their business where they're at. So I am in support of eliminating condition number seven. However, I would be more comfortable with the change of language in condition number three, because I do believe that there is something, it sounds like there's something mutually agreeable, so I think that that probably is, is okay. I, I do appreciate that, you know, when I'm looking at the number of shrubs, we're basically, this plan is providing 100 more shrubs, nearly 100 more shrubs than, than required, which is substantial. I think that's a, a good nod to your partnership with the city, and wanting to create this feeling of pedestrian friendliness, even though we know car dealerships in themselves are not pedestrian friendly. But you've done what you can with what you have, and I appreciate that. Am I disappointed in that it's a C5, and it's not looking like a C5? Sure. But based on the agreements that were made prior to, I think this is the best that, what we can do at this point, and I am in support. Any other discussion? Any other thoughts on condition number seven or three? Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, I'm supportive of the applicant's proposed language for condition number three.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I'm also in support of the applicant's wording for condition number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner White.
I always get a little nervous when you start to do subject to, subject approval, subject to this or that, but I think that, that we're operating in good faith with a trusted partner. I happen to drive by this corner all the time, because this is my neighborhood, and so I appreciate the, the improvements that you want to make, and I appreciate the thought and care that's gone into it. I agree that, you know, if this is going, if this is a site that's going to stay a car dealership, which has been in the neighborhood for a long time, this seems like a vast improvement and a good-faith effort. So I think a show of trust is in order, so I would support the change to three. And I agree that, that removing number seven, it seems like a reasonable compromise in this particular case.
All right. Anyone willing to make a motion? Oh, yes. Mr. Markergard.
Chair Albrecht, we would request that the motion include the deletion of condition number seven, if that's the intent, and then a specific reference to the new language for condition number three for the record.
As provided by the applicant?
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay.
Yep.
Anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, in case PL 2024-150, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve major revisions to the preliminary and final development plans for an approximately 59,030-square-foot auto dealership facility, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report, with modifying those conditions to strike condition number seven, and modifying condition number three to the applicant's proposed language.
What's that? Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. That item will appear on the city council's September 30 consent agenda. Commissioner Cookton.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So when we modify conditions like that, and it goes on their consent agenda, are they, are they consenting to our proposed conditions?
Great question. Mr. Markergard.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookton, we would bring that forward with the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. All right. We are on to item number five, which is a study item. There'll be no public hearing for this one. It is a planning commission policy and issue update. Planning Manager Markergard.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioners, your next meeting's in two weeks, October 3. We have two items on that agenda. First of all, a public hearing regarding a conditional use permit for an instructional center in an existing office warehouse building that's at 9555 James Avenue South. Secondly, a study item on, which is an update on pavement management program and the transportation component of the capital improvement plan. And then you did continue an item tonight as well to that meeting, so that would be a third item. And then on October 10, we do have three planning commission meetings in October. So October 3, and then on October 10, we currently have four items on the agenda. Public hearing regarding, and these are all city-initiated items, but first, a public hearing on Chapter 19, changes moving to Chapter 21. You had a study item on that previously. And then three additional study items, one on the Southland District Plan update, one on part dedication, potential code amendments, and then a third on our annual miscellaneous issues updates. So that's what we have coming up.
Thank you. Any issues that the commission would like to discuss? All right. Seeing none, that concludes our September 19, 2024, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thank you.[1771.26][1771.26][music]